It is 5:30. We will call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Boren, Mayor Proton Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Milton.
Here.
All right, would join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's invocation is by Ms. Rita Quinn.
Good evening. Thank you. As we prepare as a community for April 22nd, Earth Day, and for our Day of Community Service on Friday morning, April 19th. Creator God, we thank you for all of creation. We ask your forgiveness where we have failed to be just stewards, and we now ask for your guidance in restoring the face of the earth. May we learn to live in harmony, safety, and just sharing of resources among all that we achieve, among all so that we achieve the kingdom of God. Lord, grant us the wisdom to care for the earth and till it. Help us to act now for the good of future generations and all your creatures. Help us to become instruments of a new creation founded on the covenant of your love. Bless our council and our city as we strive to do and be better. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. All right, we have a handful of proclamations that we will start with. And the first one is Fair Housing Month. Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. The National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, I Brett Boren, mayor, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Rockdale, Texas. The next one is motorcycle awareness, motorcycle safety awareness. Motorcyclists are relatively unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers. It is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. We encourage all Mylum County citizens to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community and for the motorcycle riders and motorists to give each other mutual respect they deserve. Now, therefore, I Brett Boren, mayor, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Rockdale, Texas. We've got two proclamations, two copies of that proclamation for two different groups. And I don't know which two groups are which, so if you do, Charles, I know that one of them was, had your name on it here, and you're the other one?
I'm the other one.
And you are?
My name is Penny Fuller.
Penny Fuller?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I get to take a picture of y'all.
Y'all can all go up there for the picture together.
Awesome.
I can even park these motorcycles.
How do you like low riding?
Yeah.
Y'all work out there too.
Can you get us all?
All right. Zoom in.
Thank y'all very much. All right. Third one is Earth Day, as Rita mentioned a few minutes ago. Earth Day is April 22nd, 2024 marks the 54th anniversary of Earth Day. On Friday, April 19th, our community will celebrate our Day of Community Service dedicated to cleanup, planting efforts, planting efforts, and beautification around town. It is understood that sustainability will only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of future generations. Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship, commitments, and sustainability efforts. Now, therefore, I Brett Boren, mayor of Rockdale, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day in Rockdale, Texas. Oh my goodness.
What a lucky day.
Oh my goodness. All right. For the rowdy bunch, Library Month. That's you over there. National Library Month. Libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions no matter where they are in life's journey. Libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. Now, therefore, I Brett Boren, mayor of Rockdale, do hereby proclaim April 2024 National Library Month in Rockdale, Texas.
I love a library.
I know you're a library. All right. Last but not least on our proclamations is National Music Week. Music is one of the most sublime of human pursuits, and it's subscribed to all races and creeds. Music is the language of all people and one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. The National Federation of Music Clubs, dedicated to encouraging youth musicians, youth musicians to increasing musical knowledge and to advancing American music and its cooperating organizations, joining forces to direct attention to the dynamic influence of music in everyday living. Now, therefore, I Brett Boren, mayor, do hereby proclaim May 5th through May 12th of 2024 as National Music Week in Rockdale, Texas. Is there anybody else in your bunch out there? Just you?
Just me.
Just you? All right.
I would like to say one thing. There is another, a music event this Saturday at the K, and it benefits the Minerva Fire Department.
Okay.
And Carl Shiflett and friends, it's a bluegrass concert, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right. We have one person that has signed up for Citizen Communication, and that is Walter Hurd. That's all you come in. Mr. Hurd, you've got the podium there for, is it three, four, five, what is it?
Okay.
Three minutes?
Now for the ugly. All of that was nice. Okay, I got a water bill here for $495.15, and this come from, gotta hurry up, I'm getting about three minutes in. This was my li, my water line that come from my house, and the city hooked on, it's on, on my side, but the city hooked on from the meter to my line. That's why it leaked out right there. It just leaked out. A bomb, it just shot out. But I didn't know it was leaking out because it was inside the box. It run out in the ditch in front of my house, and just kept running for a whole month. I reported it twice, and nobody, if anybody came out to look at it, they didn't say anything to me. But I, I do have records and stuff on that, and I, I'm just talking to the city about it because I've already talked to the city manager, and we didn't come to no conclusion about this, but I'm, I'm having to pay for this water. The water came out, I didn't know it was coming out, and I tried to get them to come out and check it out to see if it was leaking, where it was leaking. Nobody ever said anything, so. I, I got to pay for the water, and it ran for a whole, whole month, and I turned it in two times, and I don't think that's fair for me to have to pay that, that kind of water bill. And so, I don't know if it's gonna help anything for me to come to citizens and to the council about it, because I don't know if y'all can do anything about it or not, because somebody needed to help me out with this, because I can't pay all this water bill, and it's unexpected too, you know, it just come up, and then, and then it want to put me on a, on a pay plan, a pay plan. Now, I gotta go up there and pay my water bill, and then I gotta step over here and pay on a pay plan, so I can't, I can't do that. I'm a retired person, I don't have that kind of money, and I don't feel like it's right because it wasn't my water that was running out of there, you know? It didn't go into my house, my water pressure in my house never slowed down. And so, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is the city of Rockdale gonna, gonna, gonna treat me fair here, because I've already been paying this. What I have to pay, I want to pay my bills and stay afloat, or else they gonna cut my water, water off, they say. So, you know, I need some help. If anybody can do anything for me. If you can't do nothing for me, I want to know. I want somebody to tell me something, because I can't stand this, and, and I've done all I can to, to try to make some common sense out of this. This is not my work. I didn't put this together, and it's on my side, and, and then they tell me it's a law that if there's water coming out on my, on the, on my side, then it's my bill, that's what somebody said, and I haven't gotten any confirmation, I want to know for sure if that's a law. And even if it is, it's not my fault, I didn't put it together.
We understand that. I know you were here last month and explained that, that same thing to it, and I know that the mayor was gonna reach out to you, I don't know if he did or not, but.
Nope, nope.
I can't tell you if we're gonna be able to help you with the bill, but I can tell you that I'll come see you.
I want your help, I want.
And I understand where you're coming from, and we're not gonna cut your water off because of this incident, for sure. We, we gotta figure out something, but all I can guarantee is I'll come see you.
I appreciate it.
And I'll try to make it as fair as possible.
Thank you very much, somebody.
Thank you. You gotta give me a minute and make me a note, or I'll forget.
I'll remind you.
Fair enough. All right, that was the only thing we had on Citizen Communication. Moving on to item seven, presentation, receive a presentation from Rachel Owens with court-appointed special advocate CASA of Mylum County. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to come this evening. My name is Rachel Owens, and I am currently the executive director for CASA of Mylum County. That doesn't make me super great, nobody else wanted it, but this cause is near and dear to my heart. I'm also on the Mylum County Child Protective Service Board, and I serve there with Jeanie Weed, and then I'm also on some state boards too. But CASA of Mylum County, it stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates, so what that is, when kids are removed from their home for whatever reason, they can no longer stay there for safety reasons, they end up in foster care or with family members' fictive kinship or kinship care. So, they are in the court system, and they have a caseworker who is with them, but then when they go to FBSS, Family Based Safety Services, or CBS, or a different section in the CPS system, they get a different person, a different caseworker. That's, that's just the way that it works. With Court Appointed Special Advocates, they are volunteers that come to us and say, hey, I'd like to volunteer with your program, so they receive 30 hours of training, they do a CPS background check, a DPS background check, and fingerprinting to make sure that they have no criminal history and that it's okay for them to work with children. And then Judge Youngblood appoints one of our volunteer advocates to work with the kiddo on their case. They go, they spend anywhere from 10 to 20 hours a month with that child, getting to know the kiddo, they speak with teachers, preachers, counselors, biological parents, the placement that the kiddos are with currently, anyone who's had anything to do with this child's life, and they stay with that child through that entire case, whether that ca, that case lasts for two months or 10 years. It's the same person the entire way through, so that gives that child some stability. There, our caseworkers are working tirelessly along with our ad litem attorneys, but they get to spend around an hour a month with the kid just because of their caseload. So, then it, when it's time, the CASA volunteer gives the court and Judge Youngblood a report of what they think should happen wherever the stage is at in the court case, and that, that report carries a lot of weight because they have actually been able to spend time with the child and research everything and find out what is best for that kiddo. Now, our, you know, not to belittle our caseworkers and our ad items, they do this, they try to do the same thing, but they mainly get like around an hour a month with the child, and we want to make sure that we know what is best for them. And a lot of times Judge Youngblood appointed our first two volunteers February, the last week in February, so we are finally starting, so we are grateful for that. We are still taking advocate applications, and we have two board member slots left, so if you guys don't have enough to do in your lives already, we would welcome you to that, or if you know of anyone that would be a good fit, that would be great. Some things, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, so some of the things that we are doing, I have included in your packet, the two handouts, what a CASA volunteer does, or the pamphlets, and then just what CASA is about. We are doing pinwheels, this sheet right here just tells you about that, and a company or a business or a private person can donate $50 to CASA, and we will place 10 pinwheels along with a yard sign outside your home or place of business for the month of April, and that is $50, and then I've included the order form on that if you want. Our T-shirt is another fundraiser, and it's the T-shirt I have on, and T-shirts are $25, and then the youth T-shirts are 20. We had 31 sponsors, and they're on the back and on both sleeves, that helped us out with that, so we appreciate that. And then another fund development or fundraiser that we're doing is Light the County Blue, and so we are selling, you, you give us a donation of $10 for a light bulb, or you give us 10 bucks, we give you a free light bulb to place out your, outside your business or your home for the month of April, because blue is synonymous with child abuse prevention, and so that's one thing that we're doing also. We had Go Blue Day where we met on the county lawn, I mean, the county courthouse lawn, and Judge Whitmire signed a proclamation for the month of April. We had about 20, 25 people with that. The police departments were pretty busy that day, and in Cameron there were some house fires and trailer fires and everything like that, so we didn't get as many people as we wanted, but that kind of takes precedent over signing a proclamation, so we do understand that. And we were going to have, it's gonna, it was gonna be called, well, it's still gonna be called Justice is Served, so we will have all the folks in our justice systems, our fire departments and things of that nature, serve a pancake breakfast, it'll be one of our fund developments. We are going to move that to June, April is crazy, and in speaking with law enforcement, Thursday mornings are gonna be the best day to have that so that they can attend, so we're gonna pick June for that instead of doing that in April. I was talking fast because I'm like, I only have a certain amount of time. So, do you guys have any questions for me? I've gone to speak to all the schools, and I'm working on speaking with all of the city councils and all the towns in Mylum County, just to let them know so that when one of our advocates comes, they will be treated like a CPS caseworker and investigator. They are bound by confidentiality, they are appointed by the court, and so they can receive all of the information that anyone else from the state could receive, and, and they are bound, you know, not to disclose that information as our caseworkers and other state employees.
How many children are currently in Mylum County that could be waiting on a CASA?
We have about 57 cases, that's just cases, so probably about 140 kiddos right now. Our goal is to have a CASA volunteer for each child, and with, with CASA, the kiddo gets one, or the caseworker, the volunteer gets one kiddo, unless it's a sibling group. We've, but we've had a couple of sibling groups that were like nine and 11 kiddos, same mom and dad, so that would be a couple of advocate volunteers, because there's no way that they could adequately spend 10 to 20 hours, you know, per kiddo, and so that's why we keep it to one, two kiddos tops per advocate volunteer, so that they can do what we say that they're supposed to be doing.
As you raise money, what are maybe the top two or three funding needs that CASA has?
My salary. I mean, that is part of it, but that's not most important, because I mean, I've made an agreement with them that if funding runs out, they will just put my salary on hold, and we'll just keep doing what we need to do, because I have a husband and he works too, so we're okay. It was in office, I'm trying to think, we've had so many, I don't know, blessings, whatever you want to call them lately, Juan Rubio has donated the old embroidery shop to us there on Main Street. We have a little space in Kathy, I mean Cynthia Zimdar's office in there along with the Rainbow Room with CPS, so it's like this big, but you know, take whatever we can get, so we're thankful for that. Mainly just the items for the volunteers, because we take care of the emotional needs. Our CPS welfare board takes care of all the physical needs, but mainly just, think like, things that we would use for like giveaways to train the, the advocates that we have, because that's, you know, pamphlet, I mean, books and all that kind of stuff, and then just awareness, things that we go out into the community and use, you know, paper and these kinds of things. It's mainly things like that right now. We raised 27,000 initially to start up, Riot gave us a donation of 7,500 at that time. We will spend, because we're still small, so right now, our budget, what we spend is probably about $118, I mean, 100, oh, 118,000, I wish it was 118 dollars, per year, and we receive half of that in grants through the VOCO Grant, the Victims of Crimes Act Grant, and HHSC, and then the rest we fundraise throughout our community. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
A long-winded answer. Anything else that I can answer any other questions?
First of all, thank you. I know prior for you, prior to being employed by them, you did a lot of volunteer work for them, so thank you for that. I know also a lot of our citizens have helped and served for CASA. How can the city support you guys? What can we do to support you? And of course, we'll have to, you know, get that checked out with Barbara and the city manager as, as to what we can do, but what do you, do you have any thoughts on how the city can better support you in our?
I guess helping, mainly is just getting the word out. I mean, we, you know, social media, we, we do things like that, but if I can send, you know, whatever is upcoming, our, you know, calendar things, benefits, things that we're doing, to send that to you guys and you disseminate, because you have a much broader reach than we do currently. But, I mean, that would be the most beneficial thing, I think, at this point in regards to that.
Great job.
Thank you again.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Was there extras?
No, I think we're good here, thank you.
All right, number eight, item eight, Consent Agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered it in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. Does anybody have anything on consent agenda that want to talk about or need to remove?
I have a correction in the minutes.
Okay.
On page seven, item 10A, I, I was an abstention in that vote. It's listed as a unanimous.
Okay, you got that? We can make that correction. Anything else?
I make a motion that we accept it with the correction for Dave Milton.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. We will now, item number nine is a public hearing, conduct a public hearing for the city of Rockdale, amended 2024 water conservation and adopted drought contingency plans. Whose, whose is this, Barbara?
This is Gerald.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The Texas Water Development Board requires certain things from cities and also TCQ together, and one of the things that is required is every five years, the city council has to approve an updated water conservation and drought contingency package. What we've done is we've used, utilized KSA Engineering who did this five years ago, and it's a very extensive review of where we're at and what is required by TCQ and Texas Water Development Board. For us to pass audits from TCQ, it has to be there, and for us to receive and maintain our loans that we have with Texas Water Development Board, these things have to be done. So, this is the final draft that we're asking you to approve, and we have also already done all the requirements for Texas Water Development Board, water, youth survey, water audit, water conservation updates, so that's what the purpose of this is.
That was a very big piece of our package, lots and lots of paper, part of the package. Was everything that was changed noted as a change in there? How would we know what, what was changed or what wasn't changed? How would we know what, what was changed, or what wasn't changed, or was, was, was there substantial change?
There weren't substantial changes in there. We kept pretty much everything the way it was. It projects it out another five years, and we just, uh, basically stayed with those. Uh, as far as I know, there was nothing of any major consequence in, in talking to Siggy, who's the lady that does it for KSA. And, um, you know, if there is a, something that I missed, I can certainly bring it back to you and let you know, but I don't think there's anything of any consequence in there.
So, we only have to have, uh, one, one reading of this, or we'll have to have? Doesn't have to come before us twice?
No, if it's an ordinance, it has to go twice.
But this is work, Jill, so do we have questions for the, is that?
Yeah, this is a public hearing. And then next you'll do the first reading, and then next month you'll do the second reading.
We'll get it. So, I guess if you would ask that question of, of, uh, the lady, um, that put it together?
I, I mean, we discussed it all through her, her doing, and I just don't remember anything that we did change, so, but, yeah. Should've come prepared for that question.
Anybody else?
It requires you opening a public hearing and asking if the public wants to speak on it.
Okay, I will open this public hearing to the, the rest of you all, if y'all wanna chime in or have any questions. Anybody speak up? Come on, Brittany, surely you got it. All right, well, if nobody has anything, we will close this hearing. Moving on, item ten, ordinances. Consider and take any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance for the amended twenty-twenty-four water conservation and adopted drought contingency plan. So we will need a motion on that to, uh...
Make a motion that we approve ordinance ten A as read?
Second to that motion.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries five oh. Ten B, consider and take any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance for amendment, amended street names for the cornerstone subdivision.
We're bringing this to you as an ordinance, because one of the plats has already gone through. When our public safety personnel saw some of the names, they asked. We had, um, they had Cherry Court, and we currently have a Cherry Lane in Rockdale, and they were afraid that that would make for confusion in the event of something that's not visible, like a heart attack, stroke, something. And they are recommending that that changes to International Court. We had Willhite Pass was recommended, and we already have a Willhite Drive. So, they're, uh, recommending that go to Lignite Pass. So we're taking some, uh, homage to Alcoa. And then under Williams Way, we already have a Williams Avenue, so that will become Masalon Way. They wanted Hogan Lane, and we already have Hogan Drive. That will become Lockett Lane. And then Miller Terrace, we have a Miller Street, and so it will become Great Northern Terrace.
Just curious, how do the names come up anyway, the cornerstone?
That was actually done with the, the involvement of council.
Oh, okay.
And so, we-
I said we didn't listen, well, we did.
And so-
Was there a committee, or?
There was. I, I know Ranch Road had asked us, uh, to put some lists together, and we gave them several, several different lists. I even did a public, uh, post on Facebook and asked, hey, what do y'all think of some great street names? Uh, so we submitted some of different stones and rocks and so forth, and one of the, I think the lists they went with were a list of names that had been submitted by our committee, uh, our community as far as, um-
Leadership.
Leadership, commendable people in our city. For example, uh, Pacel Sandoval, which are, if y'all recall, some of the littles that lost their life to cancer, so I-
I saw Perry Lane over there the other day, what's that?
That doesn't speak very-
So, Rockdale Legends and so forth. Uh, we just submitted a lot of names, and, um, ultimately they made their decision.
And so, we pulled some, we pulled some of those same people back in to get their opinion, and those, the streets met both the public safety, as well as the people who had been involved in the committee.
I did submit my name, but that, no, I'm just kidding. I just did, I didn't get approved.
Barbara, you said that, um, some of the plats have already been?
Phase one A has already been done, so if they don't have to re- otherwise, they have to come back in with an amended plat, if we don't do this by ordinance.
Okay.
And so this is an easier way for them to do it.
Gotcha. All right, somebody's up.
I'll make a motion that the council adopt the proposed resolution authorizing, oh no, yeah.
Ordinance.
It'll be an ordinance.
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance ten B as read?
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Ten C, consider and take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance canceling a portion of the May fifth, twenty-twenty-four general election for the office of council member East Ward, declaring unopposed candidate to be elected and providing an open meeting clause and for other matters. So this is basically the second reading, uh, saying we're not gonna have an election, because we don't have, uh, any opposition to East Ward.
Then you got your speaker.
Yes, sir.
I, I make motion that approve line item ten C as read.
My second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Eleven, resolutions. Consider and take any necessary action on a resolution approving the Articles of Incorporation for the Rockdale Municipal Development District and authorizing the filing of such articles to the Texas Secretary of State.
Howdy, y'all. So, uh, one thing we discovered a couple of months ago, uh, with the MDD was, whenever they created the MDD back in twenty-eleven or whatnot, they didn't file Articles of Incorporation with the Secretary of State. They went through all the other steps that they were supposed to go through. Um, I can't speak to why they didn't do that, uh, it was just something that did not get done. But everything else with the MDD is, is totally fine. This was just some paperwork we needed to file with the Secretary of State.
How is this incorporated? How's the MDD incorporated?
Uh, as a nonprofit.
Okay.
Yep.
And does it, 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 does it incorporate under the city of Rockdale, or is it completely?
Like I said, I don't know how they did it, or what their thinking was at the time. Um, I know if you go to the Comptroller website, and there is a page that they have about, uh, creating either a type A or a type B Economic Development Corporation. It says on there, you're supposed to file Articles of Incorporation with the Secretary of State. That page is silent about MDDs. So I could only hypothesize that, uh, the, the folks there at the time looked at that page, said, oh, we don't have to do that, so we won't.
This may not even be a good question, but is there anything, since, since you guys did lots of things in the ten years, is there anything that would be in jeopardy, or a, an issue, because we hadn't done that, and we made a decision?
Not a bad question. Uh, I don't think so. This, um, so, you know, you have Articles of Incorporation, that's just paperwork you file with the state. We also have our bylaws. And, uh, I know we've amended the bylaws and done some cleanup stuff over the years, but if you read through the Articles of Incorporation, uh, it doesn't change anything. Now, if we changed our bylaws, that would be different, uh, so... I'm no attorney, so I don't know what the implications of your question would be, but I hope that answers it. Okay.
I've got a quick question, um, and this is for your time, I've been for your, I guess for your time too. I've heard different scenarios. How is the MDD funded? Is it truly from the nickel, or what it was, that was from the hospital, or from, how does it? Cause you hear two different versions in Rockdale.
Well-
Everybody's right.
So, uh, if you look at the ballot history, uh, there was the ballot language that said dissolve the sales tax for the hospital district.
Which was a nickel, I think, right?
Uh, it was half a cent.
Half a cent, okay.
Right. And then there was, uh, a separate, uh, ballot question about creating the MDD.
But it was voted on by the citizens of Rockdale.
And it passed.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So what was going to the, uh, hospital, the citizens decided, they wanted to go to the MDD, cause, well, the hospital wasn't around anymore.
The, the hospital was around during this.
It was still at the time?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause this happened in twenty-eleven, didn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Shanna says yes.
So- So the three people that are watching on camera, and I, they can see how this is actually funded. Yeah, sales tax.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, this is, has nothing to do with the property tax.
Right.
Yeah, it's only the sales tax.
Yeah, sales tax.
Yeah, now, the property tax is a nickel, five cents.
So, on page twenty-two of fifty-six, if you're ever asked, they had an election on May eighth, twenty-ten. Four hundred and twenty voters were for, and a hundred and thirty voters against. And our MDD then collects a half cent of local sales tax.
Gotcha.
This came about, shall we're trying to apply for USDA grant?
Yeah, so, um, we were trying to apply for a USDA grant, uh, a few months ago, and USDA says, well, you need your Articles of Incorporation. And I think when Shanna was over at the MDD office, we were looking for that document too, and didn't really need it, so we just left it alone. Uh, but this was going, going, going to be about a hundred thousand dollars we were asking for from USDA. And they said, well, if you don't have your Articles of Incorporation, we can't give you so many points for that. And then it didn't make sense for us to pursue the grant.
All right, I would make a motion that the council adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the MDD to file the Articles of Incorporation with the Secretary of State.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Number twelve, action items. Consider and take any necessary action on the recommendation to the city of, the city council regarding a plat submitted by Ranch Road Development for phase one C for property located in the eleven-hundred block of North FM four-eight-seven, Rockdale, Mylum County, Texas, into six blocks and sixty-four lots.
So the plat is on the screen, so that you can see it. We've got the only condition, or the only things we're asking for corrections is they had it as Pickett Drive, instead of Pickle, Pacel Drive. And then the signature block needs to be updated, that we're actually inside the city limits. But otherwise, it's a very, very clean plat. You've got sixty-four new lots coming in on this, so this is their third of the phase ones. They've done phase one A, B, and C. We have eleven lots that have been approved for vertical construction. One that's in the dry, meaning it's already got its roof and everything there, and so they are just blowing and going.
So, um, on the plat, it's listed as Pickett and not Pacel, but also the signs out there-
It will change.
Say Pickett as well. So somebody's got the, ready or?
Yes.
Questions on that one? And this is phase one-
C.
C of, how many phases total?
Six, I think.
I mean-
It's one A, B, and C, and it two A, B, and C?
No, it's not, that's, I think it goes one A through one D, and then two A through two C. But I'd have to look at the, they've amended it since, so it could be different now.
Should be seven.
So will this put them in about fifty percent of it platted, about?
Right at, it's closer to forty, but-
I'll make a motion that we take staff's approval of the final plat for phase one C, subject to the following conditions. Correct Pickett Drive to Pacel Drive, and on the signature block for the code official, change the language from inside the ETJ to inside the city limits.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Twelve B, consider and take any necessary action on the recommendation to the city council regarding the plat submitted by CD Caffey for property located at property ID seven-four-zero-six-zero, Rockdale, Texas, Mylum, Rockdale, Mylum County, Texas, into lot twenty-two A.
So this is a combination of lots, where you have an existing lot and then a portion of a lot. And I believe the bank is the one that caught this, that you actually have to have that platted into a single lot. So this will now make it lot twenty-two A, and then they can finish the closing. And we've, it's clean.
This is the one that's come before us before, isn't it?
No, that was at the end.
Similar ones have come before.
Close to, like, I think, Cati-.
The same area, I think.
And it, uh, cleared everything through planning and zoning, correct?
No.
Nope?
No. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not make quorum, and so we were having a bell tower lifted, which was of significance enough that we had multiple people there. But in state law, it moves forward regardless. So it goes forward with a recommendation of approval from them, as if they had witnessed it.
Staff, staff recommends that we approve it. Y'all are the staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're the staff on this one.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item twelve B as read?
We got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Twelve C, consider and take any necessary action on approving the bid for completion of the twenty-twenty-three Post Oak Savannah Conservation District Grant Works on the Mill Street Water Treatment Plant.
I've woke up a little bit since the last time I was up here. Uh, the, there was no change in the drought contingency. If any changes would have been in the water conservation, very small ones, but the drought contingency is exactly how it's been in the past. The, um, remainder of the twenty-twenty-three Post Oak Savannah Groundwater Conservation District, uh, grant, we're spending on the upgrades of the Mill, uh, Mill Street Water Treatment Plant. Uh, we are putting in new filter media, which includes green sand. Uh, it was going to be put in last time the, uh, city had that, um, filter media changed, but it was too expensive, so we're going back and putting a foot of green sand in there, which, uh, inherently has an attraction to the manganese that's in our water, so it makes it easier to get that out. And that's one of the things we're doing, along with some other upgrades on meters and, uh, tracking our water usage. Our remaining money, uh, after we spent so much last July, when we had some, uh, wells go out and some pumps go out, uh, was right around two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. And the bid that came in for, uh, this project was two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. It was considerably less than the others, but the company, uh, that got this has done work, um, for me in Cameron, when they did, uh, when Cameron rebuilt their, uh, treatment plant. And they also did the last work that was done on the treatment plant on Mill Street about five years ago, five or six years ago. So that's, uh, uh, there was concern at first, but it's been thoroughly, uh, vetted by KPA, and, uh, they have the capa- capacity to do this for the money.
What, what kind of contingency do we need to have in place for when they get in there to start doing this work and uncover open Pandora's box when they get in there? What, what, do we have something, a dollar amount set aside for that?
Well, they're not gonna shut the whole plant down at one time, and all of a sudden, oh my God, we can't do any water. We'll do two se- uh, we have four filters, uh, two sets. We'll work on one set, and then once we get that. But those filter media, not the media itself, but the filter bases, were repaired in two thousand and eighteen, I believe. And new, uh, material was put in there, stainless steel. So, we're not anticipating to find any surprises in there, because this, this company that's doing this is the one that put that in there, and it should be pristine right now.
So the same company that worked, this two-four, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand is the one that worked on it?
That's correct.
Twenty-eighteen or whatever.
Right, so they've been through it, they've torn it apart, put this back together, and there should not be any surprises for them. But we do have capacity to share water between the systems now, uh, low-pressure and high-pressure planes, but not anticipating that's gonna be a problem.
I was, I was, I was more geared towards- I was, I was, I was more geared towards not the, uh, ability to produce water, but, uh, something we uncovered when they went and started working on it and...
Luckily, like I say, these, these are the guys that, uh, did the work in two thousand and eighteen, so...
And it's Stoltz?
I'm sorry.
Stoltz.
Stoltz, uh, mechanical.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Sooner you make a motion, sooner dinner gets here.
I make a motion that we approve action item twelve C.
My second.
Twelve.
It's course C, yes.
Uh, got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Twelve D, consider and take any necessary action on the appointments to the MDD Board of Directors for the unexpired terms expire in nine of twenty-twenty-four.
Hello again. So Dr. Monzingo put in her resignation from the MDD Board the other day, and so now we have a vacancy. And, um, didn't know how y'all wanted to treat this since last month. You filled a different vacancy, if you wanted to just pick from the list or if you wanted us to go out, uh, and go through the same process as we did before. So whatever's your pleasure.
Twice, but you never know, somebody new might have came on.
How extensive is it to do the...
We advertised in the paper. We advertised on the radio. Uh, asked our board members to talk it up. I talked to a, a couple of folks, and we got four applicants. We got five, but one dropped out.
One dropped.
Yes.
I'm with Brad. This won't help. I mean, this will help to expand that, that group, give us some more numbers to look at other than just the people that have already...
How soon do y'all have to know, I mean, to, to do the appointment?
I mean, it took us, uh, about a good month to go through that process over again, where, you know, we advertise it, we bring them in front of the MDD Board, interview them, score them, bring them back to y'all.
Did Dr. Monzingo, did she resign, or is she going to be there until, um, September of twenty-twenty-four?
No, she, she resigned.
Okay.
She's off now.
So she's gone.
She's off now, yes.
I apologize. Yes, so time may be of essence.
Is there a way to look again at the process of how you evaluated and scored? Because that was my reason for abstaining is that when I looked at the scores, they didn't, they just didn't make sense to me because you saw some highs that were crazy highs and lows that seemed to be...
So they wanted to look at qualitative and quantitative, a, a quantitative analysis and qualitative. So we did the questions, and the board ranked them based on the questions. Then the other set was just generally, rank them on, you know, would you want them on the board or not? So that, that was where the difference was.
You're going to keep that same process if we do it again?
Ah, well, there's a couple of ways to skin that cat for the answer. Uh, one being that process was never defined by the council. It was left up to the individual boards. So, I mean, if y'all don't want to see that, then we won't do it.
I liked it. I thought it was a more even playing field, more fair, I think.
Now, granted, I'm sorry. Uh, now, granted, like, I wasn't in, in state to interpret the, the data for you, and neither was Nathan. He was out of town with that being spring break, so...
Y'all adopted the same matrix from planning and zoning?
It was very similar.
Okay.
Uh, similar concept, different questions.
Okay.
Right.
Personally, I mean, I agree with, well, I'm excited to hear, hear Dr. Monzingo is gone. However, it does seem like the same top three people kind of rank the same on both scoring cards, and one of them we already, you know, added on. So it would just make sense to me that we go ahead and take these other two that were already close up because it was, it was a pretty clear division line between the top three and the last one, so... I mean, I don't know. It's just a thought.
My, my two cents would be, you can operate with the board that you have right now without this Monzingo on there. It's, you're still, uh, there's still operation with or without her on there so that we don't set a precedence that we're just taking the next person in line and that every time we have an opening in any of these boards that we're going to re-up. And Bob Burnett's new into town, he might want on there. You never know when somebody new's coming. I don't want to put more work on your plate, but I think the, the proper thing to do is to open it up and see, for all we know, uh, we're supposed to pick one of these people, and they're no longer in there. So they took something else in the meantime, another, another position. So I don't think we should assume that...
And would you say you have one spot or just for one?
We only have one spot.
One spot right now, uh, but in the, in September, we would be looking at, uh, talking about reappointments for, for whoever, uh, whoever's term is up.
Okay. But there's no rush.
I, I think that's the...
Yeah.
That's the way, what it needs to be done, in my opinion, for every, every one of these positions.
Expands that pan.
The pool, you know, that we... It may not, but may not.
At least we try.
I mean, everything's possible since the eclipse, you know?
Right. Okay.
So Lynn, if you would make that a motion, I would second it.
I can't make a...
So I'll make the motion that we...
You can. You're mayor pro temp. Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to table it till next, uh...
No, but when you get it going.
Yeah, if we table it, you can't.
We'll make the motion.
Make a motion that the MDD go back out, solicit, uh, again, using the same matrix that y'all used, on the last go-around for the position that's currently on.
Okay. All right.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? This motion carries six zero.
All right.
I'd like to ask something real quick. Barbara Porter, executive session. No, not you. I, I, I don't know if I can do this tonight. It slips my mind, but it needs to be brought to attention with a, with an atta girl. Roxanne, what did she, I think two weeks ago, you put in your report about she'd gotten some money for some funds from the...
Roxanne is amazing.
I know. We got to, can you tell what she did again? I know, because the thing is, the thing, she had to hound them over and over and over to get the money.
Has done that since we had COVID, and she had to decipher what the federal program was.
Which I'm sure is easy.
The state actually was doing it through the Texas Department of Emergency Management and pulled back all the money for what they call non-entitlement cities, which would be anybody that's not getting CDBG funds by right. So anything essentially under fifty thousand.
Okay.
And most of our fellow communities didn't get anything.
And this was for COVID, not the...
This was COVID. So at the beginning, she's the one that was getting us all these a million dollars, a million three that they were coming down that nobody else was getting because they didn't have a Roxanne. And then we went from there to the latest is when we had Winter Storm Yuri, if I'm correct. And which one? Wasn't Yuri?
Let me make sure I get this loud enough. Winter Storm Mara.
Mara, okay. So on Mara, I was out with pneumonia, and my husband stepped in and ended up spending two hundred thousand dollars essentially on, uh, repairs to the tree damage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It was picking up limbs and all?
Picking up limbs, getting all that stuff taken care of. And she got the money back.
All two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
A rough amount.
She got, well, got like a hundred and seventy-eight or something. We had some numbers that we couldn't get from the fire department. She's amazing. She's just amazing.
It's not easy to do.
No, it is not easy to do.
You bet. You want to give a speech, Roxanne?
I'd like to thank them.
Rockville City Council will now convene into executive session for sections five-five-one, oh-eight-seven, five-five-one, oh-seven-two, five-five-one, oh-seven-four of the Texas Government Code to deliberate about the agreement between Sandal Lake Ranch and the city of Rockville to deliberate about purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property with the purpose of commercial development inside the city boundaries, and to deliberate the secession planning of the city manager. The time is six twenty-seven. Board will now reconvene into open session. The time is seven-ten. Are there any motions? I will have the first motion. I don't know what we're talking about.
First one's the, um...
SLR project.
I make a motion that, uh, we authorize the city manager to, uh, engage with SLR on environmental impact study.
Hold on a second, that motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries five, six zero. Kyle?
On executive session, uh, thirteen-two, I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to engage with the chamber in the discussion of real property.
Got a motion by Kyle, and a second by Scott. All in favor? Motion carries six zero. This meeting is now adjourned.